Good. Okay, we'll call this council meeting of August 19th to order and stand for the singing of "O Canada."
(Singing) O Canada, our home and native land, true patriot love in all our son's command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Okay, thank you. Record of attendance and no absent with regrets. Any declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? And you can declare at the time of the agenda item. Good. Okay, approval of the agenda, additions or deletions. And I would like to start the meeting by saying that we acknowledge that we are on unceded lands of the Mi'kmaq. Any additions or deletions? Do I, I don't have an, I don't have an additions. State requests. N H T, that's right. Yeah, we see them, they're right on there. Thank you. Wrong page. Okay. All right, so I am looking for an approval of the agenda as it's presented, please. Counselor Cleveland, second by deputy mayor. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. So we're looking for approval of minutes. Town council, July 8th, please. Counselor Cleveland, second by Counselor Hatfield. Any discussion?
Question.
Thank you. I guess that's your job now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Special town council, July 14th, please. Counselor Cleveland, second by deputy mayor. Any discussion on this one?
Question.
Questions called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And another special town council on July 15th, please. Counselor Hatfield. Second by Counselor Cleveland. Discussion?
Question.
All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Committee of the whole, July 22nd. Counselor Cleveland. Second by Counselor Lesser. Discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Special town council, July 22nd. Counselor Lesser, second by Counselor Cleveland. Discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And special town council, July 28th. Counselor Hatfield. Second by Counselor Lesser. Any discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. That was a lot of meetings. Public hearing. So we now do our public hearings right within the council, which is great. So the, the idea of the public hearing is that I will ask three times if anybody would like to speak to these two issues, one at a time. This is not when council has discussion and debate on this. We'll do that later in the agenda. So I will read, I will read each item and then invite the public if anybody would like to share any thoughts or concerns. So 8A, civic addressing bylaw, that council amend the civic addressing bylaw to include guidance to property owners on signage, placement, design, and maintenance. Would anybody like to speak to this? Would anybody like to speak to this issue? And I'll ask one more time. Would anybody like to speak to this one? Okay, hearing, no one. This will be addressed by council later in the agenda. And public hearing, item number two is 8B, land use bylaw amendment. And that is that council amend bylaw 6.11 in the land use bylaw to ban the placement of election signs on public property while permitting the placement of election signs on private property. Well, what good timing on this one. I've never seen so many elections in, in a small period of time. So would anybody like to speak to this one on the signage? And sometimes we get folks write in, but Lindsay would let us know if somebody had sent any information and that would have been attached. Second time, would anybody like to speak to this issue? And a third time, would anybody like to speak to this one? Okay, hearing, no one. This too will be addressed later by council. So that's the end of the public hearing. Number nine, business arising. Civic addressing bylaw amendment. The recommended motion there is that council pass second reading to amend the civic addressing bylaw to include guidance to property owners on signage, placement, design, and maintenance. Okay, it's moved by Counselor Lesser. Second by deputy mayor. Okay, discussion. Anybody want to discuss this one? We had time to look at it, think it over, and we're good to go? Go ahead, Counselor Cleveland.
What the heck, I'll say something. I did want to say, and I believe I said this actually during committee of the whole as well, there, we're going to be doing a bit of a, some publicity behind this as well. We'll probably be doing a video, updates from the edge video and kind of encouraging people to do this properly through, with, with emergency first responders, people like our fire chief really behind this because you have to know where you're going when there is an emergency. And so this is, this is something that's probably a little bit overdue and very excited to support this.
Thank you. We good? Okay. Someone want to call the question then?
Question.
Questions. If you're going to do your job, you're going to have to do. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. 9B, land use bylaw amendment. The recommended motion there is that council pass second reading to amend bylaw 611 in the land use bylaw to ban the placement of election signs on public property while permitting the placement of election signs on private property. So these are the ones that we just did at the public hearing. Moved by Counselor Lesser, second by Counselor Hatfield. Is there any discussion on this one? So who polices this?
So your worship, this is policed, or I guess it is monitored by our land, by our, sorry, by law enforcement officer. And so there are some places that election after election seem to be forgotten that they're public property and signs go up there. And when we see them, we just contact the, the campaign office and advise them that the sign needs to be removed. And without exception, in the past, we've had, we've had compliance or cooperation in the same day. Nobody during, during the run of a campaign intentionally wants to run afoul of the laws.
Good stat. Thank you. Counselor Lesser.
Yeah, just, just for clarification for anybody watching, the bylaw amendment is actually changing to allow election signs where it wasn't before, but just not on town owned land. I actually, I was during the campaign last fall, I was kind of torn on this one because I didn't want to put up election signs because I didn't want to spend the money. And the reality is it keeps, you know, not having signs go up, it allows people with lower income to, to run and, you know, have a chance of winning if you think that signs are going to win elections. It is interesting that the people that won didn't put up signs. But, you know, moving forward, I, I can't see myself putting up signs anyway. I'd rather get out and talk to people instead of put up the signs. And I ran a $50 campaign and I think most of us spent about the same. So if you really want to get people involved in politics, I think, you know, having some of those limitations, and I think the idea behind the banning of signs was a good one for that and the environment. But I think it took a bit of heat and we're in an election season right now with three elections going on, or one finished and one started and another one about to start. So I think it's, it is good timing and I'll be supporting this.
Yeah, that's a, you're right, counselor. We did do that with the best intentions, you know, to allow everybody to take part. You know, if you don't, if you don't have a lot of funds at your disposal, sometimes that, you know, makes people say, no, I don't want to put my name on the ballot. And certainly that's, that's not what we're after. But signs, we did learn, signs don't vote. And we have to match that, we have to match what we were thinking with what folks were saying, and we did listen, that the whole democratic process and, and the right to say, you know, I want to put signs on my lawn. So I think we were doing the right thing and, and we're still doing the right thing, you know. We did listen. Any further discussion on this one? Go ahead, deputy.
I just wanted to be clear that obviously this wasn't done with the intention to go against anyone's rights or anything like that. Like you said, the thought behind it was well discussed, environmental reasons, site, clutter on lawns, financial reasons. I myself, last time, used window signs, just the other side of my pamphlet to put up, so there are other ways. And once again, that was allowed. It wasn't signs in your window, it was lawn signs because, you know, Vote for Mooney for Mayor still kicking around over on the Cape. So, you know, environmentally, that's not a good thing. So I know that was put out there by some naysayers and I just wanted to know that I know the people at this table at that time and the people here now would never do something like that. And it was good intentions, but here we are back again, I guess.
Exactly. Anyone else? Call for the question then? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. New business. So tender results. CAO, are we going forward with this tender? Is that the one? Yeah. Okay. So the tender results 2021 sewer flushing, cleaning, and video inspection. And the recommended motion is that council award the tender for the 2021 sewer flushing, cleaning, and video inspection to Loomer's Pumping Service as recommended by the manager of Public Works. Moved by Counselor Daers. Second by deputy mayor. Any discussion? We do this every year, CAO?
Question.
Yeah, every year. Questions called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. 10B, Harborfront Museum interpretive plan. Go ahead, CAO.
So your worship, at the committee of the whole meeting last month, we had a presentation from the Harborfront Museum that they presented to council a plan for the development of the Killam Building as a museum. And I guess the, the question to council was, do you embrace the vision that they have for the use of that building? And if you do, then there's a, there's a negotiation or a, what's called a lease, a lease that needs to be figured out with the, with them long term because clearly the vision that they put forward is going to require some fundraising and some investment and development of exhibits. But, so that is, it's on your agenda. We don't, as you know, we don't make decisions on, on the day we have a presentation, we bring them forward the next meeting. So it's here for your consideration if you wish to discuss it tonight.
Okay. That's a big one. Go ahead, Counselor Hatfield.
Yeah, I, I feel I might be in conflict here. So should I step away from the table? I'm on the board for the Harborfront Museum.
Are you on the?
I'm on the board.
Yeah, you could, yeah. Yep, just, you just have to go. Yep. Thank you, counselor. So I don't know who wants to open up the discussion. There are some, there are some things that should be discussed in camera around this one.
Yeah, I think the question, the first question, your worship, is, is really about, do you embrace their vision? And as, as I try to share with council at that presentation, there was previously a different vision, but previous council for, for what that building might be with the biosphere. But that vision hasn't come to, hasn't been fulfilled in the last few years. The former Lighthouse Museum, now the Waterfront Museum, brought exhibits in there and have been pretty gung ho, and gung ho enough to, to develop this, this plan with a, with a museum consultant that is, the plan is very well done. And so if, if you embrace the, the vision, then the next step would be to see if we can arrive at mutually agreeable terms. Now that part of the discussion in terms of what the lease might look like, that properly would be on our side, be discussed in camera so that I have proper direction for council in terms of what your expectations are there. But that's, that's a later step. If you, if you don't embrace the vision, then there's no sense in having a discussion about the terms of a possible lease.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Daers?
Thank you. To begin with, I think one of the things that puts Yarmouth, makes Yarmouth different is our built heritage. We're rich in built heritage and this building is an absolute gem. And, you know, I know that people talk about location being everything and being located on the waterfront, I think, makes it even more valuable. I just love what they've done here and I'd love to see this move forward.
Good. Counselor Cleveland?
Thank you, your worship. You asked the question whether we embrace the vision and I have to be honest, I embrace a vision. It's very exciting to see something being done with this building. And I know that things have, over the course of a few years now, begun to happen, but there was a time when that thing sat there. And it's, it's wonderful to see. So I'm, I'm fairly excited. I know and understand that there'll be some in-camera discussion about this once you hit that point. But for me, I'm, I'm fairly excited with this vision as well and excited to see something being done. I'm excited about many parts of this. Not, not the least of which is the, the ability for performances and other things to be done on the back of it. This is a gem. This is an absolutely gorgeous building that deserves to be one of our crown jewels. And so let's look at that seriously. Thank you.
Counselor Lesser?
My only concern, I guess, when the presentation happened was whether the biosphere would be losing space that they may later need. But the biosphere was represented at that meeting and seemed to be okay with that. As far as the, the heritage part, the plan seems, and if people haven't looked at it, it is, it is online for you to look over. The plan is great and I think it's, it's good to look at our history and, you know, I'm Jewish, from a Jewish background and it's, you know, talks about having, looking at the merchants of the downtown and all that stuff's very exciting and I think it'd be great to have it when people get off the ferry, they can see what built our community. So I do like the plan. My only concern was if the biosphere, which I think has room, lots of room to grow for tourism, I, I'm just worried that they might lose space. But I, I think they're okay with this plan, so that was my only, my only hesitation, really.
So, so saying that we embrace this this evening does not necessarily mean that it goes forward. We have to, we have to do some negotiations and things like that, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yeah, so, so the terms in which they went in there, they went in there kind of as a sub-tenant of, of the biosphere. But this vision is that they, they become the dominant tenant in the building and they should have a direct lease with the landlord. And that's the piece that we would have to, have to iron out with them if, if council wants to move forward with this. I, you know, within their, within their proposal, I didn't see a lot of numbers in terms of, you know, the financial side of, of the operation of this museum. And so I, I don't have much of an idea in terms of what their expectations are for how this would run and, and how costs would be covered. So, you know, that's kind of the next step. If we, if we in principle like the vision, then, then it becomes more conversation around, around feasibility for, for the town to provide that, that building for this use to this group through, through a, I'll say a long-term lease because it's going to take a fair amount of investment on their side to, to make this happen.
Yeah. Okay. And I, I think it's a beautiful proposal. I, I love everything that's in there. I just, I, I just, we have to get to that other part, but this is the first step. So go ahead there, counselor.
Is there a motion on the floor?
No, there isn't, but if you want to make it.
Okay. By the way, I agree with you. One of, one of the things my dad used to say all the time, I think he watched an awful lot of westerns, read a lot too, but he used to say, talk is cheap, whiskey costs money. And when it comes to, when it comes, visions are easy. And I know that's not necessarily true, but it is, it's easy to dream and much harder to implement. So all we're doing here is supporting that, that dream. We're doing the talk. And the next part is walking the walk and it'll take a little bit of negotiation for sure. But with-
We're not walking by ourselves, that's my concern.
Exactly.
We can't walk by ourselves.
And that is, that's exactly the point, very much so. So with that, I would like to make that motion, that we move this forward, that we, how's it exactly worded here? Let me find it. There isn't actually a recommended motion, but that we take this to the next stage, I guess, however, that should be properly worded and pursue this from here, the creation of a Harborfront Museum based on a plan.
So your worship, maybe if, since the next step would be to, to negotiate a lease, maybe to include that in your motion to-
Okay.
-to, to begin to negotiate a lease with-
Yeah.
-the museum?
Is the next step to negotiate? Yes, I guess it is.
I think so.
Yeah. Okay. You good with that one, Wade?
Yes.
Okay. Moved and seconded. So to be clear, the motion is to take this to the next step by negotiate, beginning to negotiate the lease. Okay? Moved and seconded. Any more discussion on this? Okay, questions been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Four-day work week policy. It should be followed by, yahoo! This is awesome. The recommended motion is that council adopt the compressed work week policy as recommended. Okay, moved by Counselor Lesser. Seconded by Counselor Hatfield. And discussion. So this, just, just to be clear, the four-day work week, and this is brilliant. I, I love this. It's done, it's done all over the world. It's, it's four days. I believe our, our employees have an opportunity to say yes to this. They don't have to say yes to it, so they have a choice. The great thing about this is that when they work their four days, they're working longer hours. So town hall will actually be open for a couple extra hours a day or something around there. So it's longer hours for the public to come in and do their business. It's a shorter work week, although longer days for those that decide to adopt it. And as well, I believe, CAO, they're going to have the opportunity to, to switch off, so Monday to, to Thursday and then Tuesday to Friday so that everybody doesn't, the same person doesn't always have the Friday off or the Monday off. So it's very fair. It's forward-thinking. I absolutely love it. Love it. Counselor Lesser?
I was quite excited when this came out. I know it doesn't pertain to my, my work week, but I know it's, you know, it's pretty progressive to look at allowing your employees to do this. And I think it, the satisfaction of work that the employees will get if they have that option, I think you get more out of your employees when you give them these options. Just for clarification, because I was excited about this policy and I, I put it out, it doesn't pertain to people working in town, it, it pertains to some of the town employees. So I know I had some questions around like, you know, what if a business doesn't want to only go four days a week? But we're only talking about town, some town employees. It doesn't pertain to any other aspect of town. I kind of thought that was clear, but I think some people were looking at it as, just as a town, we're just going to try to make, you know, business open for four days a week and that's not what this policy is.
Thank you. Counselor Daers?
Yeah, just looking at, at section 4.3, the shift change dates, and I see that they'll be reversed in the first full week of December and every four months following on the first full week of the month. And I understand that the intent behind that is that, you know, it'll be a rotational thing that you won't get the same month every year. But I wonder if, I, I think I'd prefer to see that discretion, discretionary on the part of the CAO, so that if they wanted to do it every two months, if staff came to you and said, we prefer to do it every two months, I would like that, rather than have to come back and amend the bylaw, that, that there be some discretion built in.
Go ahead.
So your worship, I, I have no issue with that, providing some discretion because as we, so this came up at committee of the whole last month and we discussed it. And so we went to work on a bylaw and we went, we sought what other municipalities had in Nova Scotia and beyond. And, and we also, we want this to pertain to all non-unionized employees within, within town. So we do have some people who, who work for the town but don't work in this building. And those situations are a little, little different than working in town hall. So we've kind of been talking about this as a compressed work week. So for some people, it might not be a four-day work week every week because of their work situation and that's when directors have some discretion. So we built some discretion in here. I don't mind if you want to amend that one, I'm not offended at all by that, to provide even more discretion. That, what I want to do by putting that in and some of the other clauses that are more specific is, is to honor what we talked about at committee of the whole in terms of what would happen in this building, that we would have longer hours of service to the public. And, and that is, that is encapsulated within there. And in the discussion that I had with staff, we talked about this idea of rotating so that, so that people had different months every, every year. It wasn't, you know, we were really concerned that, that there be a high element of fairness in this imbalance. And so that happens to work for fairness and balance, but I'm not, I'm never offended by having my, my hands untied a little bit in case the unforeseen should be, should come up. So just wanted to take this opportunity to say that there will be forms of this that will be implemented that won't be exactly the same way as it is in town hall.
Okay. So how does that respond?
So what you could do there-
Counselor Daers?
You could say that shifts will be reversed on a, on a regular cycle at the discretion of the CAO. Something like that.
Is that covered?
Yeah, I think so. I just wanted to offer more discretion, you know, if the, if the staff had preferred to do it on a two-month basis or even monthly basis, that would be at your discretion. So that's one thing. And the other, the other question I had is just, so explain to me what happens when you're on a four-day week, work, work weekend, your week is Monday to Thursday, yet the majority of our stat holidays fall on Monday. So just-
Right. So if a holiday falls on a Monday, the people who would be scheduled to work on Monday would, that would be their holiday. So they wouldn't work that day, they would work Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and be off Friday as usual. If a person is normally off on the Monday, they would take the next workday off. So they would take the Tuesday off and then work, then work Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So in the same week as the holiday lands, the holiday would be delivered to, to the employee. And so Tuesday, we would be half-staffed as opposed to the Monday.
Okay, thank you.
Wednesday, Thursday, full-staffed.
Okay. Good?
Yeah, so I'd recommend acceptance of the policy, would that change?
Okay. I just need your light so I can get Heather. Thanks. Heather? Sorry, I was just trying, sorry. Go ahead, counselor.
Yeah, I think that, that is a, a good, a change, Councillor Deares. I don't feel that, um, council should be micromanaging the policy, that that should, there should be leeway for that to be done in-house without the council having to, to manage that. Um, I am really excited about this policy as well. In my last work, um, field, I, I worked four days a week. I did a full work day in the four days, and, uh, and I loved it. It was just, you know, it was great, and I think that for the future, for hiring new staff, it's going to certainly, um, um, bring people to, to us, you know, when they see that it's a four-day work week, especially the younger folks. They're not looking to work five days, five days a week. They want a life, and good for them. Um, so, and I know Digby is doing this. They're on, I think they're still on a probational period with this, uh, and they're, they're loving it, the municipality of, of, of Digby, the, the employees there. So, I'm certainly supporting this.
Okay. Anyone else? Call for the question then. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And that, that's what, we just voted on that with, um, the recommendation, the recommended change. Good, thank you. Okay, letters of congratulations. I think we all know this was a, a wild week with the election, so, uh, we now have a new government, and the recommended motion is that council send a letter of congratulations to our MLA Zach Churchill and to premier-elect Tim Houston. Okay. Councillor Cleveland? Second by councillor Deares. I didn't understand your question. Who? Oh, I'm sorry. I couldn't, I couldn't hear you. I mean, we can, we can certainly do that. I've already texted him on our behalf again. Yep, yep, we can do that. So, we're, we're, okay. Wonderful. Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I just couldn't hear. Because you're so loud. All right, so, moved by councillor Cleveland, seconded by councillor Deares.
Questions.
Questions called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Washrooms in the downtown core. Take it away, councillor Lesser.
I know this seems like an odd topic-
Nope.
-put in here, but it's, um, in our accessibility committee, it was brought up. Um, I had somebody reach out that, an elderly gentleman, um, somebody on his behalf, reached out that they were downtown and had to use the bathroom, uh, while they were doing business in the town, um, and asked at a, a particular establishment, which I, I don't want to say which one, but, um, if they could use the bathroom, and they said, "Sorry, we don't have public bathrooms." Um, so, they thought it was an accessibility issue, and I think, I think they're probably right. Um, so, we talked about it, uh, councillor Deares and I, at the accessibility committee. And then at the last accessibility committee, we had somebody come and present from, uh, the Crohn's and, Crohn's Association, I guess, um, about uh, an app, I think it's called Go Here, maybe, is the app, and it allows people to look where there's bathrooms in town, um, that are accessible in any community. Um, and I, I think coming out of the accessibility committee will be a recommendation that we try to work with the downtown business owners, if they would open up their bathroom, they could be added to the app and put a sticker in their window. Um, but I, the only reason I'm bringing it up is after that happened, um, this person's daughter reached out to me separately, didn't know it, we had already talked about it twice, um, and did say, "Could you bring it to the attention of all the council?" Um, so, it is, it is an issue, and I, you know, I've explained what we were brought, I was brought up to date, that, you know, the downtown, um, town hall's available, Kilham's brother when it's open. So, but we, the town doesn't own a lot of property that we can open up for bathrooms, so it's, we have to rely on some of the people that run businesses. So, it's just, uh, an awareness, I guess, if anybody's running a business, it would be, you know, I think it's a good, a good thing for the public, if you can allow people to use the washroom in your establishment, especially people that, um, might need to go more often because of, uh, like Crohn's or, uh, age, I guess. So, it's just, this is just for information. As I said, I would bring it to council.
Good, thank you. Anything, any, anybody, anything on that? Go ahead.
Being the old guy now. You guys, being new, uh, new enough that you haven't attended any of the, uh, the national conventions or any of that that often happen, and they haven't happened since the pandemic, of course, you've never seen so many people, Phil and I, Phil Mooney and I, went through, there's, there's, there's this trade show, the best part of all of these, anytime, without question, are these trade shows. And you've never seen two guys so excited to look at outdoor bathrooms as he and I did during this particular trade show. It's kind of hilarious. And, uh, we've always kind of, or I always kind of held at some point that we should take a look at having bathrooms, um, that are easily accessible at any time of day for anything to that matter. And I know that kind of can sometimes encourage vandalism too, but, uh, I think it's something we should look at. Um, the way you ended that, I, I don't know if there's a step forward. Is, do you want to do a step forward? Is there some kind of a, a motion that you want to make?
Yeah, there was an emotion. I think it might, something might come out of the accessibility committee, um, on that. I think the presentation that we had, uh, from the gentleman was really good, and it's, it's basically getting people to sign up, businesses to sign up to the app, and then we need to do some communication around, uh, getting out that this app is available in Yarmouth, put some signage up, maybe, uh, get it out through social media that you can look on and see where, where there are bathrooms. Um, in this case, like, the daughter that reached out to me, she said that it wouldn't have mattered, like, the situation that this person was in, if it, if it wasn't that establishment, it wouldn't have mattered anyway, because somebody's thinking, "Go across the street to the restaurant" or whatever." Um, and, you know, that just wasn't feasible for this gentleman. Um, so, it's not always going to work, but yeah, I, I think if the outdoor bathroom does sound like a, a neat idea, that could happen down the road. But, um, it was just, basically it was just for information that, um, if anybody is watching that owns a business downtown, uh, we, you know, great to work with you on accessibility issues in general, but I think, you know, this is one that has gained a little bit of attention as of late.
So, there's, uh, there's two sides to that. There's a reason that, that businesses don't allow folks to use their washrooms. Um, I know the Kilham Brothers wharf has been painted many times with people's waste, for lack of a better word. Um, and what a shame, because it, it's always the few that ruin it for the ones that really need it. It's, it's, it's a shame. But, um, but we have town hall. I think the library's usually open. There's, there's, there's three or four places. But, uh, yeah, little bit of information on where they are. Okay. I didn't re, I didn't remove 10F, but it's removed.
Worship-
Go ahead, CAO.
Worship, just on that, yeah. So, just for, for clarification, because there are several advisory committees that meet regularly on behalf of the town, the, the acknowledgement that you, that you made at the beginning of this meeting, I assume is going to be a regular-
Yes.
-thing at this table. Uh, is it, is it council's wish or intention that that would be done at, at committees and boards as well? Uh, and if it is, maybe a motion at this time to indicate as much would be, would be appropriate?
Yes. Yep, you're making that motion? Okay. Seconded by councillor Deares. The answer's yes to that. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
So, your worship, so where, where this is an on, is, is, is a decision of council that will, that will go, go forward. It's not a single, like, giving a grant. It's, it's a decision that will have an effect on how we, how we conduct our meetings.
Absolutely.
Uh, we'll incorporate a statement into our meetings policy, and, uh, we'll notify our, our boards, our joint boards, in fact, that this is council's desire.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, reports, council advisory committees, committee of the whole. Deputy Mayor?
Recommended motion, that council request staff to compare revenue for Yarmouth Recreation from 2018 to present.
Seconded by councillor Cleveland. Any discussion on that one? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
That council direct staff to include the geography of participants attending the programs in the monthly staff report.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Questions.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
The council make no amendment to the personal protective equipment policy as recommended by the OHS committee.
Seconded by councillor Cleveland. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Deputy?
Uh, that staff be directed to draft a policy to permit a four-day work week as an option for town of Yarmouth non-union, union employees.
Guess we better, I guess we better okay this one.
I think they'll do a good job at this one.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
The council make no amendments to the training policy as recommended by the OHS committee.
Councillor Cleveland, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
The council make no amendment to the inspection policy as recommended by the OHS committee.
Seconded by councillor Hatfield. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary?
And that council send a, a letter to Kathy Thomas congratulating her on her retirement.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Con, oh, sorry, did you want to stop before we vote?
I want, I just want to make one comment. Having worked with Kathy Thomas, she was, um, head and shoulders above the crowd, one of the most pleasant people I've ever worked with in my life.
Steady.
And, and I know she'll be missed.
Always, always, uh, very pleasant. Um, do we vote? All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Good. CAO, um, did we, did we discuss another motion there around, um, ensuring that this was done for our employees? We discussed it, just didn't know if it was a motion.
Yeah, we did. It, it was, it's, it's a, it's an important, um, and I think a, a appreciated, uh, thing when, when people receive recognition and thanks from council. And I think that all of our employees, um, you know, work hard, and when they reach this, this milestone in their, in their work career, to have acknowledgement and thanks from council is, is a great thing. So, maybe as a, a matter of policy or practice, we'll say, we will, we will bring forward, uh, for council's consideration, um, rec, you know, recognition-
I knew Joey was going to keep track of that, just let us know.
We'll keep track, and, and, uh, I think it's, it's a wonderful thing for you to do, and I, I know it will be appreciated.
Good stuff. Thank you. Okay, planning advisory. Do we have planning advisory? No? Okay. Do you want to?
Yep, we, we don't have anything, your worship. Uh, our next meeting will be early September.
Good, thank you. Uh, reports for information. We've got a couple there. And questions for committee chairs. Anybody have questions for committee chairs? I do. Go ahead, councillor.
Actually, I have a question for a committee chair, but it's not a town committee. Um, as we get closer to the 55-plus games, I thought perhaps Gil could, uh-
Yeah.
-may, maybe make a call for, uh, at least some volunteers. I see they've been looking for some.
Go ahead, councillor.
Well, thank you for the introduction, and, um, yes. Um, our biggest issue right now, uh, we've got, I think, over 600 people registered to attend the games, which is good. I think that the games were held here in 2009, uh, the total attendance was 333. So, we just about doubled it already, and, um, and I know that they are going to allow late registrations as well. The biggest issue that we have is finding marshals to, um, oversee the games. So, you, you don't have to be an NHL-qualified referee to marshal the hockey games. You just have to know about hockey, and just be able to make judgments on, on things that are questionable or contested. So, uh, it's, it's not rocket science. We've, we've got people that, uh, you know, that bowlers that are coming out to, for example, that bowl in a league, that are coming out to marshal the bowling, uh, competitions. And, uh, so if you know anything about any of the games, um, you go to the website. It's, um, Yarmouth, YASTA 55-plus games, um-
Y-A-S five.
Five. L-U-S, right.
It's complicated.
Yeah, it is. It's a little complicated, but, uh, you'll find it if you just look for it, and, uh, and they'd certainly look for any, anyone that can marshal the games. I think some of the games were, and note too, that these are not just games, they're also activities. So, when you say games, uh, they don't really mean sports. They mean games. You have, um, 45s, for example, you know, that's a one. Um, um, eight, eight-ball, pool, you know, that kind of thing. So, uh, you don't have to be an athlete to participate. Uh, but anyway, we'd really like to see more marshals sign up, and there will be an opportunity for the marshals to meet next week, uh, one evening, just to, um, have a 15-minute sit-down with the people that are organizing the games to just clarify their responsibilities. So, if anyone's interested, please, uh, go to the website or get ahold of somebody with a 55-plus games or YASTA, and we'd be happy to, to send you in the right direction. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Any more questions for committee chairs? Or good? Okay. And additions. Prostate cancer awareness month. I don't know who put that on there, but we were, we were, it was requested that we, um, light up in blue, uh, for at least one day in September. So, maybe a motion to that effect would be helpful, and that it would just, um, maybe, I'm, I'm just thinking it would get Todd, uh, the permission and the, you know, the, the lead way to, to take care of that. Go ahead, councillor.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I'm a huge fan of these small gestures, if you will. They don't take a whole lot of effort, but, uh, done properly, they bring some really important attention to some, some very important issues. So, uh, I'd be very pleased to, uh, make a motion that we, uh, as was requested by the letter that we received, light up in blue, at least for a day, uh, to show our support of prostate cancer awareness month.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick question. If, if it's going to be any, um, any amount of work at all for our park people to, to light up, um, could we not leave it there for a mon, for a week?
Oh, absolutely.
Rather than just a day?
Yeah. Yeah, he, he won't put it up for just a day. They requested a day because there's so ma, it's sort of like my flagpole.
Okay, thank you.
Fifty requests for things, but, but yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to second that for me? Thank you. Okay, any more discussion on this one?
Questions.
Okay, questions called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Uh, request to present downtown placemaking project. The recommended motion there is that council invite the Chamber of Commerce to present their downtown placement project at the next committee of the whole meeting. Moved by deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Hatfield. Any discussion? Questions called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. And 13C, the ATV proposal. Uh, the recommended motion there is that council direct staff to develop a proposal to the province regarding the next ATV pilot project. So, as we know, this current pro, pilot project with the ATVs is, uh, it's underway, and it will be ending in, within the next couple months. And we just want to make sure that we've got a, a proposal in, um, and solid, you know, all those, all those considerations. So, this is where, um, I would love for us to have a little bit of a conversation, so we can sort of help direct staff as, as to what we're thinking on this one. Um, I'll, I'll start by being blunt. We have been pushing this for years with, with no, with no headway, but this pilot project is coming, is coming to a close, and this is our huge opportunity to get this done. So, in a nutshell, we have some options. We have Water Street, we have Main Street, we have Stars Road, we have, we have everything available to us. We just need to figure out, who wants to make that motion, by the way? Councillor Lesser, seconded by councillor Hatfield. Okay, for discussion? All right, so we just need to have some discussion on what we're thinking. Uh, councillor Deares, you want to start?
Um, well, first off, I guess I have a question. If they've had a, run a three-year product project, is it their intention to now start another product project?
Go ahead, CAO.
So, your worship, we met with, uh, representatives from TIR, Transportation Infrastructure Renewal, back in the winter, and at that time, it was clear that they were kind of in a, in a bind, because- a bind, because the pilot project had been, had been authorized and is operating, I think, in 10 different communities, rural communities in, in the province, but pilot projects as scheduled are, are, are to come to an end, as you say, within the next couple of months. So what then? So when the pilot project ends, and it's successful, and I think the evaluation will show that it's been successful, none or very few issues, but what do you do then? They don't have legislation in place to allow, even in those communities, for ATVs to continue to do what they've been doing for the last three years. So it comes to an end, and I guess it stops, unless either there's legislation or the pilot project is extended. So I think of those three options, it ends, the pilot project is extended, or miraculously legislation appears, I think the pilot project extension is the likely outcome, and we were kind of coached that way from, from the folks at TIR to say, this is where we are, this is what we see happening in the short-term future, and if you want to be a part of a pilot project, you know, they would, they would consider it, they know we've been clamoring for years, and unfortunately, we didn't get into the first phase of the pilot project, but this might be, this might be the opportunity, and so if, if we have a little discussion here about what our thoughts are at the council table, staff can put together a, a proposal to submit to TIR to say, hey, you know, if you are going to either do a new pilot or extend the pilots, we would like to enter under these, these terms and conditions, and see where that gets us.
Good, so, keep your light on there, because I know you're going to, so to Gil's question, it says regarding the next ATV pilot project, so we can keep it like that, or we can say, next ATV pilot project, or next steps in this process, that would probably cover everything, is that what you're thinking?
That's wrong, Your Worship, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, good, thanks for that. What's that? No, I didn't make, nobody made the mo, or, did somebody make the motion? Yes. Yeah, right, go ahead, we just.
So just, just to amend it, I guess.
Yeah. Did you make the motion to amend it?
To amend it, yeah.
Okay. Second the motion, the, the motion? Okay. All right, so further discussion? Vote on the amendment, okay, so we're voting on the amendment to make that change, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, okay, so if we can, can, continue with the discussion around the ATV issue, so we, we do have some options. Counselor Lesser, your light's on, did you want to share some thoughts?
Sure, yep. As some of you might know, I ended up buying two pools somehow, I don't think that's a common mistake people end up doing, but in the process of selling that pool, I met with a gentleman from the Waymouth area, I guess closer to Digby, he's the president of the ATV Association, which I didn't know, but by our house at the tracks, and he, he was there, and the four-wheelers were going by, and he said, what's going on there? And I said, it's the tracks, or, you know, the old train tracks are there, the, the trail, and he said, that's interesting, I said, do you, are you a four-wheeler, like, do you, do you go out? And he said, I'm the president, and I said, well, it's interesting you didn't know that they went by there, and his response was, well, we can't, we can't continue to go past, but in talking to him, he said he thinks, like, he's talking hundreds of room nights, if we can get this going with tourists, then this would be the destination that, like, people would stop on their way. My only concern with only having one street would be allowing the four-wheelers to somehow get to the hotels, and there's no hotels, while there is one hotel on Water Street if it, if it opens, or when it opens, but for restaurants and that kind of stuff, I don't know how we would work around so that those four-wheelers can also get to those locations, because a big part of this, besides just connecting the two trails, is the tourism that's going to bring in, and how it's going to impact the downtown and, and our business, hotels, restaurants, so I don't know how we can incorporate that, but we should, we should be looking at somehow in this proposal, including a way that people can get to establishments and spend their money, basically.
Go ahead, CAO.
Yep, that's exactly the same kind of thinking that, that we were having a little while ago, is, you know, if the intent here is to, is to not just support the activity, but to try and build a tourism, another tourism product, as has been the case in Corner Brook, then, then you have to allow people to get to the amenities, to get to the accommodations, the restaurants, and so on, without parking their bike and leaving it on Water Street, so the idea, one of the ideas that we talked about was that maybe what we're looking for is the authority to have the traffic authority designate streets within the town, and so without being specific, it's either, excuse me, it's either Main Street, or, or Water Street, or both, or, or some other street, if, if we just ask for the authority, because everything else to do with our streets pretty much is within our authority, certainly the costs are.
It's within our cha, it's within our bank account.
Yeah, so, so if, if we asked for that authority as, as part of the proposal, then, then we can really have a discussion, and in fact engage with the community around the issue as well, and that serves to, to help with the education process that's going to be necessary. Now, we, if, if that's, if that's palatable counsel, we can, we can kind of lead with that, but if they, if, you know, they come back and say, no, it needs to be very specific for the pilot, then we, you know, we'll have to act fast to, to determine exactly which streets, but your point is, is, is right on, you know, gasoline, you know, parts or, or anything else like that, if people are coming in on, on a vehicle that can only travel on one street, with those things are not available there, then they're looking for taxis, they're walking, they're looking for help, so, yeah, we'd like to be flexible, and if we're going to build a tourism product, think about it through the lens of what will their needs be, how can they have those needs and wants addressed, and, and not be disruptive to the community, right? So we wouldn't want them on every residential street, perhaps.
No, and I was just thinking that, why are we, why are we not allowing them on, on all streets except those that are, are completely residential? So all these arterial, there, I mean, there's trucks on them, there's traffic constantly on them, there's business activity, there's lots of, lots of activity, lots of noise as such, and we're not talking about, you know, we're not talking about people being unlicensed, just being able to drive down the street, this is licensed, insured, adults, you know, those types of things are all covered, I, I just don't, and again, I always go right back to economics, this is huge, we're the, we're the link that's, we're the broken link between the North Shore and the South Shore, you know, where people, and people are hopping by the, by the hundreds, actually the thousands, to go to Newfoundland, so that they can do the whole loop around Newfoundland, but they can't, this is a stopgap, and it's, it's unacceptable, so, yeah, go ahead, CAO, you were going to finish before.
Yeah, I, I had just had another thought about the, you know, the collector or arterial streets, is that with the possible exception of sections, sections of Water Street, they are our busiest streets, and as such, probably the slowest moving, right, the ones, the ones that if you introduced ATV or side-by-side traffic, they're going to be actually traveling slower on, on, on Main Street, say, than they would on Water Street because of the, because of the traffic volume, so.
That's right.
You know, the, and, and the eyes, right, lots of eyes on the street.
Everybody's watching, yes.
Anyway, that's just some thoughts, and.
Good. Counselor Lesser?
The other part of, that I forgot to mention, this gentleman brought up, is that the Waymouth pilot prevented the people who shouldn't be on the streets, it, it brought the people who had, who had license, license to be on their insurance, and like you said, they're not racing around Waymouth doing donuts and stuff, it's, it's responsible people doing it, but he said the opposite is true when you don't have this policy, is that people will then try to do something because they think it's against the law, and I've seen it, sitting in my office on Water Street, you see sometimes four-wheelers are going by really fast, and it might be somebody young thinking, I don't want to get caught, so they're going fast on that, you know, purposely, just to get away from it, so, you know, sometimes making, you know, sometimes people work as har, harder to break the law, or to, yeah, they break the law because they don't want to get caught, and if we don't have a law to break, and we have, you know, citizens that are acting responsible, I think, I think, you know, I'm just thinking the public's point of view on, of what this looks like, I don't think, it's not going to be kids racing up and down the streets and doing donuts all over the street, and I think that's what the pilots have shown, is that it's, they're very safe.
Counselor Daers?
Yeah, a couple of things, number one is, you know, I'm a bit of a frequent flyer to the Waymouth area, and I can tell you that when this pilot first began, and prior to the pilot beginning, it wasn't uncommon to see ATVs ripping through Waymouth at high speed or doing donuts in the street. Over the past couple of years, that has quieted down to the point where it's almost, it's negligible, and I think that that's probably because there's a lot of mature riders that are policing themselves, so I, I see that as a bonus, that the fact that if, if it is permitted, then it's less likely to be a problem than for those that are conducting illegal activity at the, at the present time. I'd love to continue this discussion further, but I'd like to do it with a copy of the proposal in front of me.
So, I guess we were having the discussion so we could write the proposal, it's a catch 22, right? Go ahead.
So, Your Worship, that's exactly what I would expect we would do, is, is staff would, you know, put our heads together, engage with staff sergeant and, and traffic authority, and, and maybe YASTA, and, and figure out what, what might, what might be desirable.
And make sure we have the ATV folks sitting there, because they, they see what it's like, yeah.
Yeah, so, so that, that'd be the intent, nothing will go into the government without, without coming back to council, and, and, you know, obviously, everything's on the table and, and open for, for input.
Yeah, so I guess that was, that was my point, is council okay with everything being on the table? Anybody doesn't, is there anyone that doesn't want something in there? We're just going to sort it out anyway? Right? Okay. Make it as, as easy as possible for these folks to get in. Go ahead, counselor.
I guess my issue is, I'm looking around the table, I don't see any ATV riders.
No.
So, you know, I think.
Yeah, they need to be at the table.
No, I think a lot of people that need to be at the table know more about this than we do.
Yeah, I completely agree. Yeah. All right, so the motion is, again, to direct staff to develop that proposal. All right, so it was moved and seconded, any more discussion? Okay, questions called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, thanks, folks. Okay, approval of invoices, that the various invoices be approved for payment? Counselor Daers? Counselor Cleveland, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Deputy, there's checks on my desk for you to sign, you nuke, okay, good, thank you. A data next meeting is September the 9th, and we have in camera?
Certainly.
Certainly, okay, so we'll have a motion to go in camera, I guess we have to clear. Yeah, okay. Seconded by Counselor Daers, moved by Counselor Lesser, seconded, you've got that, okay, all those in favor?